Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Lowermoreland Township. March 12th, 2024. Board of Commissioner meeting. It was stated and advertised. Please rise for the pleasure. For everyone's information, after each agenda item, the board accepts public comments. May we ask at that time, they can please come up to the podium to address the board and state your name and address for the record. If the podium is occupied, can please come to the black table and state your name and address for the record and address the board. Also, for those attending on Zoom, if you can raise your hand and also state your name and address for the record. Thank you very much. Want everyone to know that we value public comments. And in the interest of everyone's time, if we could please limit the comments to three minutes. I would appreciate that. Thank you very much. And we will start. First item is my Internal Affairs Committee. And it's review and consider minutes of the February 13th, 20... The minutes of February 13th, 2024. Commissioners, do you have any comments, questions, or? No comments, questions? Does anyone from the public have any comment at this time regarding the minutes? If there are none, it makes me like to make a motion to approve the February 13th, 2024 minutes.
Sorry.
The motion was moved and seconded to approve the February 13th, 2024 minutes. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No opposed, the motion's passed. Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is review and consider our March 2024 bill list. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Comments? As always, EJ does an excellent job. Any questions from what I would like to address us with any comments regarding the bill list? Is there anyone, Lea's? Okay, if not, I'll make a motion to approve the March 2024 bill list.
Sorry.
Motion was moved and seconded to approve the March 2024 bill list. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed? Thank you, Commissioners. The ayes have it. The next item is review intergovernmental cooperation agreement. Lowermoreland, Burnathen Fire and EMS Department. So for our board and everyone, we did have this agenda item on our January agenda. And this is a review of this this evening. Review, review only of this item to give everyone an update. So several things have happened since introducing this agreement at the board's January meeting. Burnathen Borough Council introduced the agreement at their February 5th monthly meeting. Their discussion revolved around several follow-up items. And they scheduled a special Borough Council meeting in March, I believe it's March 25th.
Yes.
To discuss just this topic. And the emergency services committee met twice. Their first meeting was on February 6th to review the discussions tied by both the Board of Commissioners and Borough Council. And their second meeting was on February 15th. And included the President and Chief of both Huntington Valley Fire Company and Burnathen Fire Company. And for everyone's information, again, this meeting yielded two important items, which is the revised agreement that is in our tablets this evening. It's being recommended to the Board of Commissioners and Borough Council. And the next is a draft letter agreement to be shared with both Huntington Valley Fire Company and Burnathen Fire Company after the intergovernmental cooperation agreement has been approved by both our Board of Commissioners and Borough Council. So Manager Hoffman has advised us with the attached updated intergovernmental cooperation agreement, the review, the revisions that were made since the board last reviewed this in January. So I'll go over those. The third whereas paragraph better clarifies the services provided by each Huntington Valley Fire Company and Burnathen Fire Company. A new fifth whereas paragraph has been added at Burnathen Fire Company's request and we're moralized continuing to work towards further joint operations. A new paragraph three has been added with the department's name. And for everyone's information, this is not necessarily will not necessarily be the name of the future operations entity. The purposes paragraph has been revised. The new paragraph five has been added. Breaking out the supervision sentence from the purposes paragraph. The organizational structure paragraph has been modified based on multiple points of feedback, including Commissioner Blanton's question at the January meeting. Thank you, Commissioner Blanton. The acquisition of real or personal property paragraph has been revised at Burnathen Fire Company's request. Clarifying, it only applies to municipal assets, not those held separately by 501(c)(3) organizations. While this was implied because the agreement is between two municipalities, it's more, it's more direct. So that is in our tablets, the intergovernmental cooperation agreement for a joint fire emergency services department for Lowermoreland Township for Burnathen Borough. Commissioners, did you have a chance to review that and then with these changes, does anyone have any questions? Or, you know, Manager Hoffman or Chief Showmaker or anyone?
I just think it's important to reiterate that this does not force the two companies together. They will still retain their names and functioning. As is. There will just be someone to oversee their operations. Chief Showmaker.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Houseman. Anything else, a solicitor would you like to add? Okay, am I missing anything so far? Okay, next in our tablets, after the intercooperation governmental agreement is a, a letter. And it's a letter agreement. And it's going to be shared with the Huntington Valley Fire Company, Burnathen Fire Company after the, the intergovernmental agreement is approved. So it's my understanding that the fire companies cannot sign the intergovernmental agreement directly. So the letter asks to signify their assent operating under this agreement. And it is to be signed by the managers and by both fire companies. Does anyone have any questions about that letter? That's in the tablets? Okay.
Public comment.
Okay. This wording change, could that not be? Can you come up and address us and state your name and address the change? Could that be, Mr. George, can you please come up to the podium? And address us from the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Mr. George Galway. This wording change. Why can't we see it on the screen? For a resident or someone in the audience, it's impossible to know the changes that you're reading. So it's very unfair, actually. So what? Is that, can you provide that?
You know what I'll do, Mr. George? I will, I can read the whole.
No.
Rather than that. But it's, it's, they're working on it jointly.
It's, it's also available for anybody that wants to make a request for the document.
Well, that's the next.
Do you mind if I answer this question?
We're gonna share.
So I don't know if you were here for the announcement, this is review only. Once there is consensus amongst the board as to what they would like to do, we're going to post it on the website. You'll get your chance.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we're not voting.
No, it's just.
It's on the website as well.
That's where it's going to get sent.
And then we're gonna share it on the website.
Good.
That's, that's, that's the next report here is that it hasn't been shared yet on our website. Since the conversations, the conversation's been ongoing all February and probably into March. So if there's a consensus of the board, which you know, I would recommend if I, Manager Hoffman, that we share this on our website and bring it back to the board in April. So there's your answer also, Mr. George. Is everyone okay with us doing that? Okay. Thank you, Manager Hoffman. You got it. Is there any, are there any other questions regarding these two documents from our board? Or comments?
Delete.
Wait, one minute, one minute. Give me a second. Anyone on our board have any questions? Okay, thank you. Now I'll open up for public comment. Thank you. Thank you very much. Please come to the podium.
So they, they all wrote, everybody knows who we is.
I know.
Chris and maybe John Voight here, can this be advertised? Instead of having to go on the web and looking for it, can it be put like the intelligence or the local paper here?
Board can advertise whatever, whatever they want to advertise. It would be a summary.
A summary, yeah.
And there'd be a, you know, an original copy of the document would be at the newspaper. But it might be easier just to come to the county building though and get an original copy.
Well, the reason why.
You can advertise.
Yeah, the reason why I asked this question, John, is because no one, I don't think a lot of people know about this in the township. When you talk to people, they ask, why did this happen? And I said, there's been several meetings, several departmental meetings, and a lot of people don't know about it. And if you get the intelligence and you go through the intelligence and you read it, maybe the word will get around the township a little bit better. Going to the website, I do. I look at that thing weekly. But a lot of people don't know about what's going on with our fire department in this township. And I think it's important that our taxpayers know what they're getting themselves into and what they're paying for. And I think if that's advertised, maybe more people get involved. That's all I'm asking for the board to do, you know, transparency. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Well.
What was it? Did we have a positive?
It's up to the board and the policy decision. It's not an ordinance. It'll be adopted by as is. I mean, unless we put a resolution on top of it, but.
Yes, so there you did draft the resolution that we would include when it comes back forward.
Resolution could be advertised. You don't normally advertise resolutions. You only do ordinances. But it's really up to the board. If the board wants to do that, just authorize, you know, my office to do that and it'll, it'll be in the newspaper. Once or twice, depending on how often you want to advertise. Ordinances go in the newspaper twice. If they're zoning, if they're not zoning, they go in the newspaper once. So I think at the very least, if you want to do it, it should be in the newspaper once.
So we will put it in the newspaper within our website.
Have we ever, ever done resolutions advertising?
Not as long as I've been here.
Ordinances. Or resolutions.
Yeah, resolutions aren't, there's no legal requirement. Just be able to advertise them.
I think in this particular instance, I think there's, there's value to ensuring that adequate communications to everyone that wants to know that they have the availability to get. These meetings are certainly public. I'm somewhat hesitant though to start a precedent to advertise resolutions if we haven't done that. But maybe there's another way to go about it that we can advertise or communicate in a way to satisfy the needs of the, of the public to make sure that that information is out there.
What other way besides all our social media outlets and website and if we do not advertise this?
Well, in the respect of fire companies are aware.
The fire companies are.
They participated in the meetings that created it.
Who pays for the fire department? The taxpayers.
Okay, Mr. McDay, could you please come up to the podium if you want to address?
This is.
Give a public comment.
I mean, the taxpayers pay their taxes. They pay for the fire department. They pay for the services of the, of the township. Alls I'm asking for is transparency. That's all I'm asking for. We're not setting no presents here. We're not. This is, this is something that the township doesn't know about. Nobody knows. The board knows about it. The people that come to these meetings know about it. But I bet you, if you go and not go and tend to your board, they won't know about it. Do it. Get back to me.
I will.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. McDay.
Okay, I don't see any harm.
I don't either.
And I think something that's intergovernmental, it seems big enough to, to put it out there and let people learn about it.
Anyone else? Or?
I'm with Pence on this. It's a new president that would be conducting on this. I'm not opposed to it. But I don't see the benefit since it's on our website and on our social media outlets.
I don't have a problem with publishing it. Maybe we just don't call it what we're calling it. And I think it's good, I think it's a good idea to communicate it out there. If it's called publicly advertising it, that's what we're doing because it's a big enough issue.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. I'm, I'm all, I'm okay with advertising this. Commissioner Houseman? Okay, so.
So I'll, I'll advertise it for the.
Do we need a motion or what do you think?
You should do a motion. Motion authorized a solicitor advertise the resolution.
For the inner government.
Adoption of the intergovernmental agreement.
Okay, I'll make a motion to advertise the adoption and resolution of the intergovernmental cooperation agreement. And to absolve solicitor rights due side.
Second.
Motion was moved and seconded as described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion's passed. So there is no action on this podium that was discussed. Next is the administration report. Manager Hoffman?
Sure, so three items. The last one, I might ask Engineer Woodrow to jump in. So the first one is just FYI that the authority audit is nearly complete. And all of the kind of financial stuff that we do into 2024, looking back to 2023, that is the, by far the simplest. EJ has the much bigger task with the township audit. And then we did have a meeting a couple Mondays ago with DCED staff about that school district grant that we applied for on their behalf. DCED indicated that a change of scope to shift the grant funds to help offset stormwater improvements as part of their upcoming driveway improvements for the, the two Red Lion Road driveways is acceptable. And really it falls under the same scope language that it will be or is in that grant agreement. The, of that project, about $60,000 is estimated to be related to stormwater. So that will be a reduction from the overall $198,000 grant that was received. But at least it's still is able to use some of it. And then the third one is just a quick update on the Longview Drive Basin. Now that that bid has been awarded, we did a pre-comp meeting and getting close to starting some construction. So I didn't know if you could do 30 seconds of it.
Happy to do so, Chris. Thank you. Yes, as Chris pointed out, we did have a free construction meeting with the low bidding contractor last week. He has got his forces mobilized. He has provided all this documentation regarding performance bonds and insurance certificates and all the affidavits that the bid documents required. We are awaiting some drier weather. You know, that's a good time to get in that basin would be through a little bit of a drought, but certainly he is ready to go and expects to have that done in the next couple of months. We have also been back and forth with the company who supplies the automated Orifice control device. Going over some final details with them based upon our outlet structure. And I think there are a lot of folks looking forward to this basin retrofit project for many purposes. Education, stormwater controls, water quality improvements, all those good things that we've talked about. So it's exciting to get one under our belt.
Thanks, and that's all that I had.
Thank you, Manager Hoffman. I know EJ is not here with us this evening. Does anyone have any questions regarding? EJ's report. Administration report. She basically talks about the year-end reports, 2023 to 2023 audit. And about grants. Any questions from the board?
But if I'm not being, being all the grants that we think going out.
I can do that real quick.
Sure. Go ahead, Chris.
So the first one is, I guess, on the verge of closeout is the PennDOT Green Light Go. That's a carryover from 2019 and then up to the five signals around town. One that is, I guess, a frustrating look into the state and federal bureaucracy. We have received a grant in 2018 called the Monco Transportation Program Grant, which the first time that they opened that up, it was to help municipalities who have received a Green Light Go grant on the state level offset their local match. We are working to get the county funds which have to go through a state approval for the work that has been completed for several years. So I overheard EJ's most recent frustrating conversation, one of those bang your head against the wall, how is this possible? Conversations. So still working to get that one closed out. So COVID-19 Orifice Small Water and Silver Fund, that is the one that we had just talked about, the school districts. We are working on a local this is local services account, local share account grant for the Betfair Streetscape. We applied for that, I think, at the end of last year. That would hopefully be the design funding for the Streetscape improvements on Huntington Pike. We have another local share account grant for Valles and Park to upgrade the trail there. We have our PennDOT Multi-Modal Transportation Fund Grant that will be the next set of improvements at Philmont and Red Lion. We have in a Monco 2040 Strategic Planning Grant to help install the sidewalk on Byberry Road to connect Ward 5 to the Pennyback Trail. We are waiting on a second grant application to DCED's Multi-Modal Transportation Fund Grant that would allow us to do the full scope of that project. So once we have word on that, that will determine if we proceed, I believe. That is every.
Thank you, Manager Hoffman, for reviewing the person. Next is our tax collector report. Jane, I see you up there online or like the tax collector. Can you give us an update?
I certainly can, Denise. Thank you very much. Base collections are at 9.9% for the year. The outstanding balance is $5,753,766. Collections are a little slow right now because most of the properties have mortgages. So the mortgage payments don't come in typically until the week before the due date. And the due date this year is April the 12th for the discount. So everything seems to be going as planned.
Right. Does the board have any questions for, for tax collector? Like to invite public comment at this time? Would anyone like to address our tax collector for anything they might be experiencing? Anyone online? Okay. Thank you, Jane. I'll accept your report as submitted.
Thank you, Denise.
Have a good night. Next is my liaison report, which is the Lowermoreland Township School District, Lowermoreland Township DEI, and Lowermoreland Township Community Events. I attended the school board work session meeting. It was on Tuesday, March 5th by Zoom. The next meeting is scheduled. It was a work session meeting. Our next voting meeting is Tuesday, March 19th, but always at 7:00 PM. Just to give some highlights, Jamie Lynch spoke about the highlight project update. And he advised they're going through their punch list items and finishing up work on several work with several contractors. Mr. Lynch also advised they are continuing to work on basin number two by creating a spillway to provide relief in that basin. He also advised the school board that the school district is responsible for maintenance of the basins and the township will be inspecting the basins. Thought that was important perhaps to all of you. A lot of discussions revolved about the RFP for Facilities Assessment and Planning Study that they are currently working on. And the school board also discussed the TERP RFP and the interviews they had with three the representatives from different companies. The, the school board also discussed applying for a grant for the facilities assessment and planning. And again, their meeting is on the 19th. It will be a voting meeting. And all the meeting agenda, recording, and minutes are available at their district website under the school board tab. Does anyone have any questions? Regarding the school version.
Denise, did the school board hired a company to do an enrollment study? Third party for the BET development?
They did.
And the numbers came back similar to the numbers that that these people?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes.
I just think it's important that the public know that they went and created their own. They hired a company to do a third-party study because we heard a lot of stuff about the BET development and the school district having a big impact. So the school board hired a company to do a enrollment study? They did.
It was a state study, Joe. It was a state personnel investigation.
Everyone's almost.
Wait a second, let's.
The Montgomery.
It was the Montgomery.
Right, this was almost. Yeah, everybody's almost there.
Yeah.
Anyway, the study was done. And then numbers came back kind of similar to what BET, the developers' numbers were. I just think it's important.
It is important, but also they did, besides the county study, they did hire a company, Joe. So you're right.
Oh, yes.
I think it was called Future Thing or something, Future Storm Thing.
Future Thing to the prior study.
Prior study.
The person who presented this, that there was a January meeting with the Montgomery County Plan.
Plan Commission. So, but.
Roughly begin the same or about 12 to whatever.
It was a little bit higher.
12 percent.
Yeah. That's a good point.
I might, I might as well, it reminds me that this is something that we talk about reporting on. Just so everybody knows, the appeal by the BET additional uses is over. Been dismissed by appellate courts, actually by county court. So if anybody wants the details, feel free to call me or ask me about why that was dismissed. Anyway, so that didn't hold. I don't know that it held anything up because I think there's a preliminary plaintiff rule up still, but there may be some more activity on the final plan at some point.
Correct. Well, I think we're expecting, provided that they've made all of the kind of technical progress and all their outside agency permits, we would expect a final plan submission this spring. Okay.
Okay.
Sorry about jumping in there.
Absolutely.
Public engagement.
Okay, Mr. McDay, do you want to address the board?
No.
Okay, thank you. Next is just the DEI, this diversity, equity, inclusion. We did not have a meeting in February. Our last meeting was January 22nd, which I reported on that last month. Our next meeting is for April 15th. In the meantime, at the school board meeting, Carla Pacidi reported that she's been working with the students and administration revolving around goals set by the committee and in the community. And Lowermoreland High School, for everyone's information, they're having a multicultural club night. And it's six to eight on Thursday, March 14th, in the new high school cafeteria. So. Next is our Lowermoreland Township Community Events, our egg hunt run by the Huntington Valley Library, sponsored by Lowermoreland Township. Will be this weekend, Saturday, March 16th at 11:00 AM. And it's going to be a lower mall park. So if anyone wants to come, bring your kids. Looks like we're going to have really nice weather. And if it rains, the rain date is Sunday, March 16th at 2:00 PM. Next, our Arbor Day Earth Day event is going to take place Friday, April 19th from 4:30 to 6:30 at Lowermoreland Park. Morefield Lane entrance. Leah has already been advertising that. Thank you, Leah. And will be given out again township goodie bags filled with all kinds of informational materials. We have a tree planting and a park cleanup and some crafts for the kids. And also the, the PAC 802, their kindergarten through fifth grade that made bird boxes and are going, the leaders and the kids are going to join us on that day and work with public works installing them around that park. Does anyone have any questions regarding that? Everyone's invited to come to that, residents of all ages. And if you don't want to come and you want an informational bag, we're glad to get that to you. Just email the township and we'll make. email the township and we'll make sure any resident obtains that information. Uh, next, Leah and I have been working on an environmental workshop, so we finally had gotten that scheduled. And it's going to be, uh, at the Huntington Valley Library as a joint collaborative effort. And, um, we scheduled it with Kate Fisk from Brier, Brier Bush Nature Center. And she's going to, uh, have a workshop, a journey to biodiversity. And it's about native plant gardening and how it's important to our environment and our homes. And Leah, again, thank you Leah, you put a really nice flyer together. And we look forward to that. We're asking everyone to sign up in advance for that. Um, please do so. And, um, the only other thing we have is our Pine Road School Second Grade, uh, Township Tour with, with the township, the Lower Wall Police Department. They drive by all the historic area on the Huntington Pike and they drive by the public works. And, uh, they just have a great day, that's on June third. So, um, and then, uh, E J mentions that the Fairy Tale Trail, which is a library event, but everyone loves it. Uh, if everyone's interested, it's, it's a story and you walk around Lower Wall and Park. It's going to be April twenty-first to twenty-seventh. Everyone of all ages really, really enjoys that. So, does anyone have any questions? From our board? Okay. Thank you. Anyone from the public? That concludes, this concludes my agenda items for this evening. Um, thank you commissioners. Next, the chair recognizes Dennis Mueller, Chair of our Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, the first item on my agenda is review sketch plan for twenty-eight ninety-five Pine Road, L L C number twenty-three zero four. And that's the old O'Briens, uh, at Pine or at Pine in, in Philmont. I, this, uh, purpose of this, uh, sketch plan review is, is really an opportunity to exchange information for the public and for the commissioners on what has been proposed so far. The little vote will happen tonight, but I'd like to invite representatives, uh, come up and address the board. Please state your name.
Certainly. Uh, thank you, board. My name is John Walco. I'm the attorney representing, um, two-eight-nine-five Pine Road LLC, which is the landowner of the property, two-eight-nine-five Pine Road, but really, uh, the principal, uh, who is a working man by the name of Tony Sirota, and he got caught out at work tonight, so he might be able to, to join us. He was at the planning commission meeting, but, um, he's, uh, an individual local to the area and is the, the property owner. I'm joined tonight by Scott Woodrow from Design Lens, the architect. Uh, and we have submitted renderings. I'm not sure if, uh, they're included in your, uh, electronic packets. Um, I'm happy to, to share them as well. But, um, yes, we're, we're, we're talking about the, the O'Briens building, um, which I've always loved. I think I applied for a job back when it was a rugel. The day there as server, but, uh, great fries, horrible sight. Um, you know, no parking, no, the grading is horrible, um, no stormwater, uh, no pedestrian access to the site. Uh, and really, what we're trying to do here, what Tony's intent of this project is, it's really three things. It's to work with the proposed improvements that are expected to come with this intersection. So this plan is made with an intent to take into consideration what we will now call the five points being made into that roundabout, uh, with the four areas. So, um, some of the waivers that we're going to be asking for, for example, uh, eventually, it's probably more for, it's to not put in the sidewalk, not put in the curving, because eventually Pendon's going to come in, put in the sidewalks, put in that curving. If they don't do it, if the project falls apart, which we're hoping that it doesn't, we will do it, but, uh, at this point in time, um, the plan is to take that, uh, that, that roundabout into consideration, uh, with what's being proposed. Uh, the second is to really provide what we hope you find is a, is a beautiful, attractive capstone building of what will be one of the most, I think, visible intersections in, in the township. Uh, and Tony really wants to, to do this right. Uh, he mentioned at the planning commission that he kind of feels that this is how he would like to leave an impression on the township by having, you know, what, what he thinks is an architecturally, uh, stunning building. And we can have, uh, Mr. Woodrow talk a little bit more about what's being proposed and sort of the interior layouts, um, and the uses for, which, uh, is essentially at this point, uh, just general office use, um, with no, no tenants identified as of now to occupy that building. And, uh, the third intent is really to just improve those issues that I just mentioned on the site. Um, again, at this point, it's just a sketch plan, so the stormwater's not done. It's not an engineered plan for stormwater, but we're going to add stormwater. We're going to fix the parking. We're going to fix those pedestrian connections. We're going to fix the grading. And i- it is a pretty unique, uh, difficult site because it comes to that point. And again, that point is being taken away by that roundabouts. We're working within the confines of, of the property. Um, it's certainly going to be better than what's there today. And I think, I would hope that all parties would agree that what's being presented will be better than simply taking the existing building, you know, putting a new skin on it and just leaving it as is, uh, which wouldn't be a land development, just kind of going through a, a building permit process. So what we're here today for is just a tentative sketch plan review. Um, again, nothing has been filed yet. The, the hope would be that we can get some feedback, um, if any, um, on your thoughts, uh, to incorporate into what would eventually be a filed, at least a preliminary final plan, uh, and it'll come back before you for, uh, preliminary approval, uh, at a later time. Um, there, there likely is going to be some need for some zoning relief. Um, based upon, one, the height of the building purely for what we'll call the pilot house on the top. That pilot house, which we think is a, it's a nice architectural, um, feature exceeds the height. And again, that would be furthest away from the, the roundabout. Uh, the other, uh, waivers would be for setbacks. We're not increasing it, we're not moving it closer to the property line, but the way your code reads is if you're adding height onto, uh, sort of essentially a non-conforming setback, then you need to get zoning relief for that. So since we're going higher, uh, within the setback, we need zoning relief. Um, noting those issues, uh, the planning commission unanimously favors moving forward with the plan, uh, as it, as it appeared. Um, and again, waivers, we'll have to hash them out, uh, as we go through more engineer plan, but I mentioned some of the things that we think we're definitely going to need right now. Um, and, uh, I'll just have Scott kind of come up briefly, uh, if there's any additional questions related to the interior layouts, the uses, the heights, uh, because he is the one to put together uh, the renderings that you have before you write.
And also let us know for, uh, just presentation purposes, we have the site plan and some of the existing features if you want us to change the script.
Yeah, I, I think we'll go through the elevations and maybe we can end on the site plan, so we can see sort of the entire site from this.
Good evening, uh, Scott Woodrow, I'm with Design Lens, uh, I'm the architect of the project. Um, and maybe to flip on a different slide, I can kind of review some of the program of, that's good, right, that's fine. Um, so as you can kind of see, the building is situated towards the corner, which is kind of the existing configuration. Uh, you can kind of see the roundabout curve that's being put in there. So there's actually a portion of the existing building that goes into that new right of way, kind of right that Pendon's putting in. So we're removing those portions that hit that curve. Uh, we have like two very small additions uh, on the back, just to square off the building a little bit more where the old like kitchen freezer used to be, kind of off the backside of the building. Uh, overall, though, the building footprint is decreasing by, I think it's like a hundred or a hundred fifty square feet. Um, that the actual footprint is decreasing through some of this, just moving the building around a little bit, but generally the footprint is going to be the same. Uh, currently, uh, the site is completely paved. As you can see, we're adding a bunch of greenscape really along kind of the, the roundabout and some of the pedestrian way, buffering some of that parking. Um, so we're taking a couple thousand square feet and making it actual pervious, which absolutely will help store water, also beautify the site a little bit. Um, and we had a few different conversations uh, with Tim about kind of the parking and also the traffic engineer, working with Pendon to understand what the right traffic flow was for the site. Uh, so we had a few iterations, but this kind of ended up as the best iteration, where we kind of have a one-way in and a one-way out. Um, so we have a one-way, I believe, off of Tomlin Center for more correctly, and then back off fine. So we had twenty-three parking spaces that is, uh, permitted per the code of business or retail uses. Um, so we don't need any zoning variance for that. Uh, and it would kind of be like an easy in and out and through the roundabout, uh, in that sort of way. Uh, if you want to keep going, I'll go through some of this, the brief interior. So right now, uh, we have the plan set up that could be multi-tenanted. Uh, so we could have like small office or retail tenants in the building, or they could look to take a whole floor plate or two floor floor plates. Uh, right now, the total building size is about nine thousand square feet. Uh, it's three stories. Um, and again, as we would have tenants, we might divide that up in, in different ways as it's kind of marketed and they kind of see what sort of uses, um, are warranted at this, but right now, we're just looking for, you know, office type tenants and or like small retail type tenants to be in this building. Um, so each floor plan is pretty much, uh, just identical, uh, in itself. I'll look to the next slide. Uh, so it's the third floor and there is also, uh, you know, they wanted to include a small rooftop deck as an amenity for the tenants of the building. Um, so as I mentioned, there are two, we'll call pilot houses or access structures to the roof, um, which do trigger that variance, so we can see what those look like on the outside, but again, we tried to tie them into the building, um, in a way that kind of made sense. Uh, but that's really what's exceeding that thirty-five foot threshold, uh, are those access structures.
To get to the rooftop.
Correct. Um, if you want to go to the next slide. So you can look at the elevations here, um, it's more of a modern aesthetic, so there's a lot of transparency and glazing. Um, but we have a, a stone material with a fiber cement panel. Uh, we encourage the owner to have quality, long-lasting materials. Um, so each one of these materials, you know, obviously glass, but also fiber cement and the stone have a masonry component to them, so they do hold up a bit better. Um, and should look good for a long time. If you want to go to the next one. And then we'll move to the next one. It's easier to see in three D always, keep going. So this is, uh, an elevation or in a perspective from the, uh, the parking lot, kind of a very prominent entrance way, uh, which is where the stairs elevator core would be, so that's the main entrance to the building. And then if we go to the next slide, we can see kind of from, uh, I believe this is Pine Road. Uh, this is kind of the elevation, actually this is Thomas Center, I'm sorry. Um, this is the perspective, so you can kind of see it kind of dies down um, a bit, so the tallest portion of the building's interior of the site, we kind of balance it back down towards the intersection again, trying to be mindful of of the height, um, but we do have, again, a lot of glazing, a lot of glass transparency. Um, and again, kind of a inside-outside feel, the bright daylight into the office spaces. Um, and there you go, there's the other, uh, designation from Pine Road, so you can see the stair tower, uh, which is a, a stone material, will be like a stone veneer that goes up. Um, again, somewhat of an older material, but using a little bit more of a modern, modern stud. Um, so you can kind of see the before and the after, just next to each other, just for reference, um. As John said, we're trying to make it look a little better than it just did.
It, it's not lost on Tony that the, the desire of the township is really to make Philmont Train Station a very central hub that people are going to walk to from new developments all around, the whole plan, the Philmont Avenue corridor. And he wants to have, you can even see on the O'Briens, really isn't where it would be a sidewalk, it's now a steep concrete slope down, um, and we want to make something that is attractive to the entire neighborhood. It just makes everybody feel good walking by to and from the train station, and that looks good there, uh, you know, sort of the top of that traffic circle.
Chris, with the roundabout, when they put them sidewalks in, are them sidewalks eventually going to wrap around Thomas Center, come up high and go to the train station, or is it just going to dead end start?
Uh, no, go connect to the train.
It's going to go, okay.
Uh, you mentioned small businesses, assuming, uh, retail, what? If you can, I don't know if it's possible to elaborate further, um, like with this sport, like food service, is it, would it be more in stores, commercial? Just, just get a sense for the kinds of businesses that might.
What, I think the decision for what the businesses would be right now is really based upon the part of the camps. Um, and the way that the code reads really says general retail, whole business office type uses is permitted. Um, I mean, that we could fit a small restaurant on the, the first floor, but there might be a little additional parking.
Yeah, of course, we'd work for that.
Or at that point, so I think any food service probably be more like brewery.
So and, and if that was the case, we'd be back before the board for a zoning variance for the parking if that was desired, um.
If, if, if we, if we thought the use worked and there was enough room for it, or if another arrangement was made, for example, the issue came up with the planning commission and actually Tony and I talked about it before. Tony would love to purchase the other adjoining lots that are sort of empty and kind of run up. Uh, I think it's owned by SEPTA right now. He, he would love to have, just for, uh, additional work, but, um, it, I mean, if something could work, provide for use, uh, we would certainly try to make that work. We, we just can't tell you that the parking as is would accommodate.
Yeah, I think that's what I'm, yeah, thinking about is since it's a very defined space, um, if it's a lot of customers coming through, you know, will that create truck trouble for them? And then where else would they go? And it's that great trouble, but, yeah, I understand it. There's still a lot to be figured out.
Yeah.
Chris, does this fall in the leverage since it's down Philmont Avenue?
I believe the answer is yes, but I would need to confront, but if it's in the revitalization district and there is new assessed value assigned, uh, they could apply. As long as there's no residential.
Right. Then I think that all does abide as, um, in the end, the rev is the base and the transportation overlay district, that's the overall transportation overhead, that's the overall.
What path are you planning on taking? Are you going to the zoning hearing board or are you going to some other?
So the, the path, uh, at this point would be, again, we're here as a sketch plan. See if there's any feedback. We need to do a, the, the plan needs to be fully engineered. One of the things, and I think you're, you're still sort of well aware of the issues of needing to make sure that you only want to go to the zoning hearing board once. So we want to make sure that we have all the issues, so we need to, to then do an engineer plan. Um, we would likely then be in a position to know what's down our zone, go to the zoning hearing board, um, at the same time, and we're hopefully, uh, also apply for at least a preliminary plan approval. Uh, but we would hope that by the time this can come back before you, any of the zoning issues would have been, uh, worked out by that time. Maybe before we can get into additional questions, engineer, if you'd like to go through your report, highlighting things for us and stand by in case there's some questions.
Yeah, happy to do so. And I think Mr. Walco did a good job of kind of defining some of the things that we've been talking about with the applicants over the last number of months. Um, traffic engineer, planner, engineer, we have shared some emails and some sketch plans back and forth over the, even starting back a little years in summer, I suspect. And certainly the first thing that we saw when these plans came in was, was traffic and access and what that all meant. Um, I do think that the applicant spends some time with McMahon and with Pendon. And while not designed, I think there is an alternative to this, to show this current plan that kind of works from a circulation standpoint. Um, the one-way in, kind of one-way out, uh, kind of limiting left turn needs, uh, all kind of makes some good sense uh, for the site. So I think I'm comfortable that there is not an immediate red flag with regard to access and circulation. Um, all those things, stormwater, you know, landscaping and lighting and all those things that are important will fall out through this land development process. Um, one of the things that is a concern is the, uh, right number of parking spaces to support the anticipated use. At the planning commission, we did talk about a little bit of the risk in developing new retail, new office space in the current environment. You know, it's tough to get that funded these days. Who a bank, you know, there's a lot of vacant offices, a lot of vacant retail. Um, so I, I think it's kind of coming upon the applicant to make sure that they've got a viable, uh, building and tenants are going to want to be here. I think the position of the building next to the rail station and next to some new single-family homes, um, and Philmont Country Club and you know, what else is coming, makes this an attractive place to be. And certainly, I think the site is deserving of some revitalization, uh, obviously. The purpose of our ordinance was to facilitate projects like this along Philmont Avenue corridor. So I think the, the partnership really needs to be, you know, parking and building use, uh, I think are the concerns, to kind of layer from the staff's perspective.
And, and obviously, we, we know that we're confined to the site that we're in, so. We had the.
We have the the generic uses for office, retail, as we mentioned, um. And if if it's a situation where you're doing the land development process, uh, someone comes in to to Tony and says, hey, we want to do a medical office here. We may be coming back for zoning hearing board to get two or three more parking spaces, and at that point in time, we'd have to demonstrate that it would work.
More intercepting by.
Right, so, um. Uh, the site works for the three floors, for the amount of space that's there for the office, for the the general. And we're hoping that the small office use is still out there and attractive, but I mean, obviously, the huge parks are closing down, but. There's still that need for that small, nicely attractive modern office, particularly at this location.
Engineers, attorneys, kind of.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Um, break C I C here on Zoom. Do you, would you like to review your report?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, uh, good evening, and um, so. As I'm sitting here listening to the presentation and the Tim's comments, um, it kind of took the wind out of my sail a little bit, but um. You know, from a planning perspective, right, um, sometimes as planners, we talk about projects and. And this is kind of really putting chrome on this property, right? This is a redevelopment project. Um, Tim already talked about the Philmon Ave corridor and the goals to have redevelopment occurring, so it kind of fits right in. To what the township plan through adoption of this um MU revitalization district. Um, and it accounts for the uh traffic improvements, right? We talked about sidewalk connectivity. Um, there's architectural criteria that the applicant will have to meet and be approved by the by the township. It's near a train station, um, it's gonna connect to the train station. So from a, from the planning perspective, right, this is a a really solid project um for the township, right? You're. Basically replacing an old outdated building um with a very modern building. Um, you know, that's gonna kind of anchor, you know, the the Philmon Ave revitalization. Now, on the flip side, right, there are some cons. Um, and these were talked about the planning commission and they were kind of touched upon tonight, too. Um, the zoning district allows for a number of different uses. And one of them includes apartments in a mixed-use building and single-family attached, right? There is some concern that. You know, potentially this could convert to apartments in the future, and. I know the goal is to keep this uh business oriented, um, but you know, there there. Is it potential that the building can convert to a residential type use? Um, there are parking constraints on the property. I believe there are thirty, some parking spaces in that range. So it's gonna limit the the number and types of uses um that can locate within this building, right? We talked about restaurants and, you know, that's gonna require a a large sum of parking um for that type of use. There's non-conformities on the property, um, applicant already talked about needing to go for variances. And, you know, we talked about that the site, you know, is kind of constrained, you know, just by the size and location of it. But overall, I mean, my take on it is, you know, as. The township continues to work with the applicant and the applicant continues to work with the township. I think when this is all said and done and the plan is engineered, you know, I think the township is gonna end up as a really good, really good product, right? It's gonna be really kind of fit into, you know, the vision of that corridor. So from a planning standpoint, you know, this this is a kind of win-win for the township. And again, and everything that I talked about, you know, basically was summarized by the applicant and and by Tim. Um, so I don't have much more to add, you know, my comments, again, basically, well, you know. They they kind of revolve around architectural requirements of the building. And then, you know, some uh questions about the uses and and parking and so forth, but um. Again, from the planning side of the equation, right, you know, we can really kind of, you know, work together and 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 come to a really good project. You know, this will be a good win for the township.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions uh from the board?
Yeah, I have a question. Do you plan, because it's a office use at your business office, uh, is there gonna be a generator in the building or?
Still plans at the moment for it.
Okay.
Um, but it's probably something we will consider as we continue to develop that.
Will the building be sprinkler? Do you have any plans for that?
Any other comments from the board?
I just, I'll just say, I'll just echo the number of comments that were made. I think it's a good-looking building. I think, you know, in the interest of what we've been talking about, it 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 looks good, it it fits with what we've been talking about. Trying to revitalize that area. You know, my concern is the same concern that's been discussed already, and that's. The use, because we predominantly talked about office space and I haven't necessarily heard it as why the plan for that, so. You know, I would just encourage you to continue to to look and to fit that in as the plan comes closer together that. That is in fact going to be the plan, because what I've heard is. There's, well, it's not an office space, then maybe we would do something different, maybe like retail, maybe this, and. I think we we need to start a whole lesson, you know, what that actually looks like.
And and I I would feel comfortable or confident that. As the land development plan process moves forward. That we're hoping that some people would be calling out Mr. Sharoda, saying, hey, I hear you have a building that's in process and hopefully getting some of those tenants. Uh, and then and then, you know, that hopefully used, and it'd be great to have, everyone wants to know who is gonna go in for uh financing. Uh, uh, we come over, we'll become more clear.
Any other comments? Any comments from the public? If there's no other comments, then uh thank you for coming and thank you for sharing this.
Thank you. We look forward to uh finally a plan and and putting the uh the details on and being back before you hopefully with uh successful development. Thanks so much for your time.
The uh next item on my agenda is review the extension of the mid-period Forest Hill Cemetery. This is twenty-five five grade road, number twenty-four dash zero one. And just to remind everyone, this was to add, we planned to add additional graves, uh grave stones. Uh, grave sites, it was removed from the February planning commission. And there was an extension and we are received, that letter is in your tablets from Patrick Foley, the project manager. And he's granted that that extension, you know, to give you any rights for, I think so, if it comes up. And we can discuss it at that point. So no actions needed at this point. I don't know if there's any questions. If not. Any questions from the public? I'll accept the report.
Can you move this comment?
The, what what part are they expanding? Uh, I'm not sure, in the cemetery?
I know, so if you're going in the main driveway to the funeral home off of Byberry.
Okay, off of Byberry, okay.
Um, it's immediately to the right, and it's running on Byberry Road, is where they're creating some new grave sites. So no new physical building construction, just some clearing, some grading, some walkways uh that are part of that. Kind of grave site expansion.
Like they did up the hill.
Exactly.
So they also cleared some on Pine Road. Uh, during COVID. And it's much more visible on Pine Road. Is there any plans for uh shrubbery or something? To.
The the plans today call for a bit of landscaping. I think they're a bit short on their buffer requirements. That's one of the things that we revealed during the land development review process.
Right, because it's a lot more noticeable, you know.
Hmm, okay, thanks. Any other comments?
We'll accept the letter. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the building efficiency report, and I'll just quickly review that. Uh, we had forty-two permits uh issued for February, um. Forty-two uh for inspections, there were forty-two or forty-seven inspections, forty-two were residential, five were commercial. Uh, fees for permits for the forty-two permits for February were eleven thousand, year-to-date eighty-one permits. For a total of twenty-five thousand, and that permit-wise, it's a little bit short last year, but dollar-wise, it's about the same. Uh, there were a number of uh complaint violation notices. And there was thirty of those. And that pretty much concludes that. Were there any questions from the board? Questions? If not, I'll accept the report. And then the last item, or my last item, are the liaison report. Uh, for Perpelli Logical Restoration Trust, there was no meeting previous month, but there is a meeting coming up uh next week. And, um. So I'll report on that next month, and then with respect to the planning commission, there was no meeting in February. There is a meeting on March twenty-eighth at seven P M. That will not be held in the township building, it will be in the old, in the old place. And that concludes the agenda.
Thank you. Commissioner Mueller, next. Chair recognizes Commissioner Joe Pace, Chair of the Public Works Committee.
Thank you, thanks. I don't care, review and consider twenty-twenty-four paving bids. We put out the twenty-twenty-four paving program on Penn Bid on Wednesday, March sixth. We got a total of seven bids back on the project. The base bid was for Buck Road builder Laurel Sipler, Tillworth Circle, Gant. Steven Road, Michael Road, and Pine View. Alternate one was for Shadywood Circle, Vermont, and Lino. Alternate two, Longview, Carissa, and Lisa. The total award for, the total price for all three bids came in at seven hundred thirty-six thousand, seven hundred seventy-five dollars, eighty-five cents. Which is just above the twenty-twenty-four budget of seven hundred thirty-five thousand. So we're pretty close with that. Um. We're in Athens and did not have any page paving projects for twenty-twenty-four, so there's no alternate for them for this year. Does anybody have any questions for the paving program bids? Have we ever looked at this? For Glasgow, so Glasgow was, so Glasgow was the low bidder for the, out of the seven. We've worked with them before, yeah.
And it only includes alternate one, right?
No, that's base bid, alternate one, and alternate two.
We weren't able to do alternates three and four, uh, but one and two fitted in this. I think one extra that we were anticipating.
Any questions from the public?
All right, I'd like to make a motion to award twenty-twenty-four paving bid to Glasgow Inc. Including base bid, alternate one, and alternate two. In the amount of seven hundred thirty-six thousand, seven hundred seventy-five dollars and eighty-five cents.
Sergeant. Motion's been moved and seconded to award the twenty-twenty-four paving bid to Glasgow Inc. As described, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Opposed? Yeah, I have it. Thank you, commissioners.
I don't know, review and consider the mowing bids, spending more money. We got, the uh, this went out for the parks and the right-of-way area for the mowing contract. On March sixth at one P M., we received rebids back. The low bidder was Armorer Group for a two-year total cost of one hundred eleven thousand, eighty-nine dollars. The second closest bid we got was a hundred thirty-five thousand, and third place was two hundred fifty-one thousand. So about thirty-four thousand dollars in difference, and that includes all the parks and all the right-of-ways. It is not the same company that the school district uses, just so people are aware.
So for each year, it'll be uh total fifty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-four, fifty. So for two years.
Yes, we budgeted sixty-five thousand per year, and we came in about fifty-five thousand. Any other questions from the board?
I do not. Steve, do you have anything to add to this? How this is gonna help free public works?
Uh, it's gonna allow us to do some regular maintenance, catch up on a lot of things. And Adamore's local company, and they're, I'm very confident there.
Thank you.
Questions from the public?
Sure. No guidance. Well, I'd like to make a motion to award the mowing contract to Armorer Group for twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five for a total of. One hundred eleven thousand, eighty-nine dollars.
Sergeant. The motion's been moved and seconded to award the mowing contract to Armorer Group for twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five. For a total of a hundred eleven thousand and eighty-nine dollars. To note also that each year is fifty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty cents. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? No opposed? Motion's passed. Thank you, commissioners.
Next item is M. Joe Perks in the building. So Joe is from H V A A.
Yeah, you can come up there, put him.
So Joe is from H V A, he's a volunteer coach. And they are once again requesting to put some temporary lighting at Abidale Park. For the Friday Night Lights game on Friday, May tenth. I was there last year, it was a great time.
Yeah, it's hundred fifty people showed up, so if you could just kind of. That's about it. Um, twelve U travel team, we invite one other team, and we move into an eight o'clock game and have a good time. So we get some temporary lighting, we're out by ten-thirty, we send out like pamphlets around neighborhood, get the okay and.
And historically, Joe, um, the games would be finished on the eighth.
Yeah, we can only play some hours.
So it really is just given an extra two, two hours of time. Yeah, it was really fabulous last year.
Right. Any questions from the board? Anything else? Public. So, um, Chris, what do we have to do to approve this? Just, there's no motion or?
I'd recommend a motion just so that the board is taking action.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion for H V A to have their Friday Night Lights game Friday, May tenth. At Abidale Park.
Sergeant. The motion's been moved and seconded. For H V A A to have their Friday night lights, a baseball game at Longmont Park on Friday, May tenth. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? No opposed? Yeah, I have it.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks a lot. Thanks, Joe.
Uh, next item, N is Public Works. Steve.
Well, I mentioned a couple of things. A lot of meetings this past month, those February, March, it was a lot, a lot of train, a lot of meetings. Um, we had a quarterly super meeting, which I'm sure the local public leader. Uh, we just, our first semi-annual stormwater meeting with the engineer Woodrow and Andrew Hoffman. So we got a lot of things playing into the long-term base and obviously the first big thing going. Um, went to a, with engineer Woodrow again, Laura Providence hosted a. A class on how to actually do the dry weather testing for stormwater, so that was very interesting, you know. Matt went to that, we got all the equipment, we can start doing all the testing from the experiments, so we're maybe ready to go. Uh, we had some repair from the rain in January, the section is here and the library, both of those, both jobs were done. Um, pickleball, very busy at the gym. H V A basketball's coming to an end, uh, people are starting to use the outside pickleball courts. Hopefully, that's what they're all about, we're gonna get the court coated as quick as possible, but, so that's it.
Free mulches available, right?
Got composters up there, it's in the bin, we got a brand-new bin in the parking lot. Um, going fast, so, we don't have too much left.
Question, um, I've seen the uh street sweepers out lately a lot.
Yeah, so.
Is that not a spur of the moment, or?
As soon as the weather gets warm enough that we can send out, say it's not gonna freeze or anything, I'll send them out right away. So he's actually been going out the last few weeks, actually went out before the last snowstorm, and then we, you know, obviously shut it down and then. So the goal was always to do every street at least twice, so hopefully she would get three or four times.
I was asking, this is a kind of spur, I got a guy sent, just so cars aren't parked in the street, because my neighbor was like, yo, uh. I didn't know they were coming, I would have moved my car.
So, it it is kind of spiral, it's kind of hard, so right now, that's all he'll do, is Joshua sweep every day. It's hard for us, as as small as we are, to say like Tuesday, we're gonna be on pack, or you know, Wednesday's gonna be award one. What he basically does is trash, where there's trash, they'll go to the opposite ward, and then. The next day, he'll go to the the other end of the south, and they'll go award there, so we try to do two wards. And it'll just keep popping. What I can start to do is post it more on the website.
I'll just say where we're at.
Or maybe we can put it, Leah could put it on our Facebook page.
Yeah.
I could try to keep a, like a weekly update or something.
Thank you, and thank you, Steve, for uh having the guys, even in the pouring rain, we cleaned up Huntington Pike. Cleaning up and.
Trash again, roads are trash, always try to do it in the winter, when we get Pine Road once, I don't know if you've been either, it's terrible, yeah, but yeah. But yeah, so we'll we'll get at there for the rest of this week and get a talk.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve. Item on liaison, H V A A. I attended a board meeting. It's a third Thursday of each month. I went to the last one. Uh basketball's coming to an end. There's uh two teams that made the championship for travel. The fifth grade boys. Uh play tomorrow night at seven P M. At the Old High School. So it's been passed around Facebook. A lot of people are trying to get people to go cheer the fifth grade boys on. The fourth grade girls team is in the championship at Busselton. On Thursday at seven P M. So if anyone wants to make sure in the Philly to Busselton, go watch the girls are in fourth grade. They did a good job too.
Where are they playing, Joe?
At Busselton.
At Busselton.
Yeah. Busselton Thursday night for the fourth grade girls, fifth grade boys, Wednesday, tomorrow at seven o'clock at the Old High School.
Okay.
And I know there's going to be other teams supporting on there. And opening day is going to be April sixth, Saturday, April sixth at ten A M. I'm sure they made Steve aware. So they have the parade. They walk around Abidale back into the park. So Saturday, April sixth. It's still for him. That wraps up my agenda.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Pace. Next, the Chair recognizes Commissioner Duffson Alley, Chair of the Public Safety Committee, Joe.
Thank you, President Perez. The first item on my agenda for this evening is fire truck trade in resolution. As part of the purchase of the new ladder and pumper trucks, the township will trade in the existing two thousand and one K M E ladder. And two thousand and five American France pumper. Procedurally, the first I S township code requires the board to adopt the attached resolution authorizing the trade in. Functionally, the final proposals for each new truck in Gwick will include a reduction based on the trade in value offered for each truck. Gwick will then sell each truck to Brind Brindley Mountain Fire Apparatus L L C. Based on the schedule and the attached offer sheets. The ladder truck will yield fifty thousand and requires the truck to be turned over on April thirtieth, twenty twenty four. The pumper will yield twenty thousand and requires the truck to be turned around October thirty first, twenty twenty five. This is just before the arrival date of each new truck. So response will be coordinated amongst mutual aid companies while fire operators train on the new trucks. Is there any questions on this from the board?
Yeah, I have a question. Um. The the timing, but when we saw in the last meeting, the first truck was supposed to come mid-July. Um and so I just I see April thirtieth here. I just want to clarify, is we get a new truck earlier or is this being, will there be a span without the truck?
Well, that's correct. And what we will do is we'll make adjustments to our mutual aid responses to help cover the time period that trucks. It's not very common practice among fire partners.
So it's six weeks we're going to be without a.
Actually, it would be a little bit longer, but six weeks to get it. But then we have to get it through the training and how to utilize the vehicle and make sure everybody's up to speed on that. Drivers are trained to drive it. I don't see that as a problem and we're very confident if the mutual aid partners will all settle with it.
Any other questions from the board? Come on, Joe.
Questions, Chief. With us being short that ladder for approximately six weeks, what's the response time addition to the township if we're in need of a fire truck?
What would be automatically mutual aid for the closest next to you? Which are coming most of the time anyway.
Which is Rockledge?
Well, a lot of trucks, Hampton, Halfboro, Little Grove, Abington. We have a number of apparatus at our disposal.
So what we don't have a response time time to where with our stipend program, then firemen have that has pretty quickly and you want to see it a lot faster. With the numbers that they have, but if you take that ladder truck away from the township for that period of time, we don't have an accurate uh. Response time from other fire departments.
Well, that's a yes, no answer to that. The staple crew goes out with the first uh apparatus for the call for a particular structure fire out at this stage, it would be the engine squad first, not the ladder. Ladder may not even get out.
So but it's going to be then a longer response time for more apparatus to be.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But I'm comfortable with the system. It's in place to handle it.
You might be. Okay. Fact, I was not like the. Thank you.
Any other questions from the public? Anybody on Zoom?
No.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number twenty four dash twenty five, authorizing the trading cost as described.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded to approve resolution twenty four dash twenty five, authorizing the trading cost as described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? No opposed? Yes, have it. Thank you, Commissioners.
Next up on my agenda will be Chief's report, please.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners and Public. Um this past month, we had two assaults that resulted in arrests uh on the Dogwood Lane. It was also a resisting arrest incident, uh disturbance. We had a reported robbery, uh detective. Our newest detective, uh Corporal Christopher Daniel uh responded to a robbery that was reported at the Philmont Train Station. And as he investigated this incident, it became apparent to him that it was a fraudulent report. And he followed up on that investigation, got video, did interviews, and subsequently arrested the reporting party for a false police report. Um so that was a good indication that we picked the right person to join our detective division. We only had four theft from autos last month, so that was really good. We're very happy about that. Seven DUIs. Uh kind of our regular fare of uh fraud cases, couple municipal police, municipal ordinance violations. One related to A T Vs, one related to burning trash, I mean brush next to a home and a false alarm activation. Um on behalf of the police department, I wanted to thank the board commissioners for letting the police department take about an hour of the last meeting or so. Doing promotions, commendations, uh retirement announcements. We want to thank all of you uh for for allowing us that time. Over last month, we did an event with the Philadelphia Seventh District, providing uh wheel locks for Kia's and Hyundai's. If you're not familiar, those vehicles are subject to being easily stolen uh due to a software malfunction. Or um improperly uh applied software. So we had partnered, you know, a couple of about a year and a half ago, we obtained thousands of these locks. Uh from Kia and Hyundai at no cost to the township to give out to people. So we've been since then, we've provided them the agencies in the region. Uh we partner with the Seventh District to hand them out to the public and that was a nice event. Um it's actually the chief of police down Atlantic City, I contacted and he just did the same program down there. So it's something that we were able to spread. Uh Sergeant Julia Huttick graduated from Northwestern University School of Policing and Command. So we're really proud of her. Uh one of the projects that she did during her training was to basically take all of our officer wellness programs that we have, all the pieces. And put them into one program. So we're looking forward to implementing that full program that uh over the next month, couple of months. We announced our police test, so we will be hiring at least two positions uh in the coming month and a half. So we'll be turning that around pretty quickly. And if you didn't watch the news yesterday, we had an attempted arson fire on Pine Road. The responding officers did an outstanding job. Uh the first two officers on scene, Officer Tom Rollon and Anthony Perrines. Uh observed a man like in the front of a house on fire on Pine Road. They may immediately chase the man on foot, took him into custody. Uh the second two officers on scene, Sergeant Huttick and Officer Sierra Bulker extinguished the fire on sorry, fire company. They did a good job and they put the fire out very quickly and um it was just an outstanding job. So we were we were happy to have the news. Picked up on that and we're able to get some uh well deserved press for some of our people. So um but that's all from my report unless you have questions.
Any questions from the board? Anything from the public? And to.
Thank you, Simon Lawrence. Michelle, your report, please.
Good evening. Just a couple of quick notes from my report. Rich Worlington and myself attended the emergency manager, the emergency county. Sorry, the Eastern Montgomery County Emergency Manager meeting. And we discussed the uh the drones that are being purchased in the area through different townships. And we're still working on the final draft of the mutual aid agreement. Uh it's been a little slow, but hopefully that'll be coming up sometime. In the spring and the edits conference due in October is is coming together very nicely with all of our attendees who were coming in October. Um the new warehouse in Eagleville is finally close to completion. The U N O I think is being uh being. Today they're getting the U N O. We'll start moving our specialized teams, servants, or rescue and hash mat. We will still keep the Fort Washington location for the eastern end of the county. Uh I've also made a request. There's a a large. A large storage area of. Lights, signboards, gloves, masks, all kinds of stuff that are at the Fort Washington location and they're looking to. Uh bring some of that down more closer to the east. And so I've put a request in for another possibly another light tower and a signboard. Uh we have a good relationship with the county, so um. They trust us down here that we keep writ uh. This crew, keep it um well maintained. So hopefully we'll see how that thing goes next month. Township staff, myself and the daytime crew, we did or we got our our steps in last month with the opening of the new high school. We did numerous. Uh invest inspections on elevators, smoke detectors, exits, maps, stamp, pipe connections. We went through that building at least three or four times. Uh so I'm working right now with Lance on some additional keys and some additional testing. So that was a that was quite busy last. We also uh had a fact, we had a follow up to an alarm call at Crescent Fields with uh Chief Mark Showmaker and Chief Millman, and we spoke to Adam Rice. And they are due for their first fire inspection since opening up. So these two areas are going to leading up to possibly, we're working together with Mark and Ted on getting the inspection program back up and running. With the daytime crew helping us out. Um we have a few members who are set are qualified in the inspection. Inspector one and two through the county. And hopefully, once we get that up and running, these are two um. The. Crescent Field will be one, and then we will do the uh full building inspection at the old middle place goal, which will then turn into the old school. So that'll be a good practice for for the for the crew. Also, uh just real quick, the Montgomery County Youth Fiber Prevention Intervention Program is up and running. Um we had. Three uh cases so far. We've had two additional and all the fire marshals in the organization are now looking to go to different school organizations and fleet departments to promote this uh this program. And we also have an arch medical, we have a. Business that wants to bring in titanium printer, the three D titanium printer. It's uh highly unstable in air, so we are working with code and the building to and we've made some phone calls to a outfit in Limerick. To see how this is all going to play out. And once the plans are submitted, we'll be reviewing that with Arch Medical. So something new to this area, which we don't know too much about. We're going to make sure we know what we're doing before they bring us. So any questions?
Nothing from the public? Chief Salmond, your report, please.
Good evening, everyone. As you see, my report's been submitted. It's a joint report between the two communities. Uh just to highlight a few areas because very much Michelle has covered some of the things that I had on my list. Um we attended a number of meetings throughout both communities for both the government level or the fire department, emergency services level. Uh we spent a lot of time at the schools. Bob had mentioned a lot of alarm testing and final testing at one before we get the kids into the school. A couple bugs that needed to be worked out that Bob worked diligently on to get done. As well as Joe's and Ted's staff. Uh we were down in Presse as Bob mentioned, we met with the staff to go over some of their emergency procedures as well. Uh seems to be a little confusion when we get there. They have some newer staff and we're learning more about the building as we go as well. So we spent some time doing that. I attended a meeting with the city schools group. We toured the new high school with Abby and then a couple items that we looked at as we went through the school and some corrections that we thought could be made and make things a little bit easier. And then we conducted training with both the Brennathen Fire Company and the Huntington Valley Fire Company after we toured the building and the procedures that we're going to utilize for when we get calls there. Uh and met with both sets of chiefs from both departments to discuss the new trucks that are coming in. And I'm happy to report after a short thirty minute meeting, we came to consensus on a rebranding of what the trucks are going to look like and color schemes for that. Uh there's still some question on finally, as we mentioned in the agreement there, but. We do know what they're going to look like. We're very pleased with what they're going to look like, and I think everybody's going to be happy with the outcome when they come in. It's not going to be your traditional red and white. It's going to be red, but a gray top on it. It's very attractive. Uh we started an equipment review with uh Chief Millman and his officers as far as the equipment on the new truck, what's going to go on with the loose equipment, what they have apparently what needs to be replaced. We're trying to pin that down. Because that's all part of the mounting that goes along with the purchase of the vehicles. Uh I also met with the chiefs of the Huntington Valley Fire Company to finalize the details on the tower ladder, which actually is going to go online probably next week. So we were trying to finalize the the components that we wanted within that. I have been doing a lot of reviews on the specs that have been coming back and do the sign off on that. We finally have the final. Document. I'm waiting for the final drugs to come in that we can show everybody, but uh we're making great progress on that. And then lastly, I'll just highlight, uh we spent a lot of time on this agreement that we talked about tonight. We're trying to facilitate the uh. Uh both communities approving that as well as both fire companies signing off on it after the approval goes through. It's been a lot of hard work between myself, the manager and the solicitors and getting that done. And we're happy to have that final uh document that I I agree, let's get it out. People can see it so they know it's going on. It's important that they know that. Real quick on some of the response totals, I'm going to go over both communities because they affect both communities and they kind of come together in uh. For emergency health or emergency medical calls in Brennathen, ten calls. Brennathen Fire Company responded to Lower Moreland Township ninety three times for emergency medical calls in the month of February. And outside of their area of the two communities, they responded thirty three calls in the mutual aid. For a total year to date calls for them, one hundred and thirty six. The Brennathen Fire Company responded to Brennathen calls one time. Into Lower Moreland twenty four times and outside of Brennathen one time for a total year to date call for them for sixty six calls. And then the Huntington Valley Fire Company calls into Lower Moreland for twenty seven for the month of February. One call into Brennathen and four calls out on mutual aid for a year to date of seventy two calls for the year as of the date of this report. And that concludes my report.
Mark, one quick question. On the M S response, shouldn't that be the monthly total, not the?
Uh I'm sorry, on the M S, that was monthly in the year. The fire department should share today. My mistake in that.
Any other questions from the board?
I have a question, Chief Showmaker. Um have you reached out to the other mutual aid companies, you know, with regard to fireside to just tell them what we're?
No, I have not. We had Chief Millman and his staff and uh this far and the Brennathen folks and do that. I can tell you, I they know what's going on. They're they're pretty impressed with being able to get this truck this quick. They don't know how that happened, but uh. So they're on, they'll be on board with doing that. Again, it's it's a mutual aid system that we have. It's designed to handle these type of events. This happens every day throughout the United States. It's not something that's uncommon. Yeah, I get it. There's going to be a little bit of lapse. It may increase some of the response times slightly. But on the long uh. And things I it's going to be covered. It's going to be taken care of. It will be protected well.
I'm no expert in the fire uh department side, but I've really learned a lot of viewing the trucks and and going around with you and and chief Millman. It's been great.
Well, his staff has spent a lot of time and and has been engaged in this. And I know it's, you know, a controversial thing when it first came up, but. The end result is we're going to get a really good piece of apparatus that can serve the community as well. And it's going to be a great tool for his folks to utilize, make their job to more easier and more efficient.
And it's my understanding that not every fire company has a ladder truck. Am I correct in saying that?
Correct. And you you mentioned Rodney Truck.
And that, you know, we provide mutual aid to others because we have a ladder truck. So the ladder truck is not. Am I on the right from what I learned really? Being with all of you, the ladder truck is not really needed on every single call, but.
No, I mean, on a structure. They're assigned to it. Anything below that, like a an alarm system, yeah, they can go on that, but car parts, fuel part, brush part, there's routine calls. It's usually a one engine type of call.
How many ladder calls did we get so far this year?
Uh I don't have a status. I was just curious. Yeah.
We're fortunate in that we do have ladder.
That's correct. Yeah. And it's part of our I S O protection. The I S O rating is ratings established by the insurance companies. Uh they put weight into the type of apparatus you have and we've covered. Uh, they put weight into the type of apparatus you have and cover the area that you cover. Uh, it doesn't get impacted when we have a short duration uh. Laps in time. If it was something that was every year's time, then they start to look at that a little bit and they could. Adjust your rate temporarily with that. But this is to keep our rates, and I think we're in the high fours here. I'm not sure. I think that's where it's at right now for this community.
Thank you so much.
During the time that the uh, you know, we're missing ladder truck or engine. And second effect are um. I had it in my head. You know, where we pay people to come in for the day.
No, it's like the program. No, no. They're still going to respond like they do any other time. Uh, if it's, it would have been a first out ladder call, we wouldn't be on that assignment. It would be somebody else will be in as a substitute for us. For instance, let's say we were going up to Southampton for a call for the ladder to go. Well, our ladders committed to something else or not in service for some reason. The box cards in box can automatically put the next one into the computer and it dispatches. And that's how the system works, I'm going to get.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Anything from the public? Thank you, Chief Showmaker. That takes me to my liaison reports. My first is the Civil Service Commission. Uh, I have no report there as we know. The next one will be at the library. Uh, a few offices there. A local resident Nancy Marka, which donated. Six of her paintings to the library, their own display in the rear quiet study area. The library now has an adult chess club that meets twice a month on Tuesday. It's at two P M. Feel free to visit H V Library Network for more information. These already mentioned Easter egg hunt, which will be taking place on sixteenth of March at Abidale Park, or excuse me, Lowmoreland Park. Uh, Rod Peter Rabbit will be there to take pictures. The eggs go quickly, so make sure you show up on time. And finally, on March twenty-first at seven P M, the library will present Determined Spirits. The story of Amelia Earhart in the community rounds. Audience will learn about events from American, from this American icon's life, from childhood through her final flight. And hear Amelia Earhart's encouraging message for women of her time and today. This is a multi-generational program intended for audiences in the fourth grade through to old. If you're going to be there, please RSVP. And the library would also like to thank the township for the two A D devices that were donated to the library. That concludes my report. Back to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stanley. Next, the chair recognizes Commissioner Houston, with Houston Chair of the whole property group.
We now have a new sewer department report. You know, everything is working fairly well. And we have uh mostly normal preventative maintenance. There were some issues at uh Beth Air Station, but I understand there are. Um, plans for revitalizing that station, improving it.
Yes, so one of the three pumps, uh, the board authorized the purchase. At the end of last year?
Yeah.
To, because the lead time for that was so long. Once that is completed, then we will get proposals for actually installing. Uh, so that's just. One of the things that we need to do every five, seven, ten years, whatever that duration is, those three pumps. Are the barrier between uh modern society and not in Little Fork.
Considering the total monthly flow was thirty-two point eight million gallons. We want that to continue to work. Does anyone have any questions on the sewer department? Okay. Um, my liaisons are lower more than township authority. Uh, which did not meet this one. And historical architectural viewpoint, which did not meet this month. So I'm done.
Thank you, Commissioner Houston. Next, the chair recognizes Commissioner Sean Blanton, Chair of the ordinance committee, Sean.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Uh, all right. So first on my items here, reviewing the zoning board, the zoning hearing board. Uh, so last month, there were. Excuse me, let me start with uh the March uh agenda coming up. So there are three applications on the March zoning hearing board agenda. Uh, this will be next Thursday. Uh, application number twenty-four oh four. Uh, this is the application of Ryan and Virginia Obermutter of fifty-one Welsh Road. They're seeking variances for permit or reduction of front yard setback from forty to sixteen feet. And the expansion of nonperformance where fifty percent is allowed, but sixty-eight percent is permitted. The second application will be application number twenty-four dash zero five. This is the application of Roman Murat of thirty-four ten Paper Mill Road. Who seek the variance to permit thirty-three point eight percent lock coverage where twenty-five percent is permitted. And to permit a six foot front yard fence. Finally, uh, number three, application number twenty-four dash zero six. This is the application of Michael Bararty of two four zero Barnsley Avenue. Who seeks variances to permit a reduction in the side yard setback from twenty feet to twelve feet. A reduction in the rear yard setback from twenty-five to twenty-two feet. And an increase in the maximum height for accessory structures from fifteen to twenty-two feet. Last month, two decisions were made in the February hearing. First, on application number twenty-three dash eighteen. This was the application of Andre Levinsky and Roya Betson of five seventy-three Phillip Road. They saw a variance to increase the permitted lock coverage from twenty-five percent to forty-nine percent. Their request was denied. And in our application number twenty-four dash zero three. This is the application of the Penny Pack Technological Restoration Trust. They saw variances for freestanding signs at thirteen oh nine Cold Spring, twelve forty-nine Cold Spring and twelve eighty-two Turwood. The variances were to exceed sign area seventeen point four square feet where twelve square feet is permitted. And sign height twelve and feet, six and a half inches where only six feet is allowed. Both variances were granted. That uh concludes my report on the zoning hearing board. Uh, again, uh, March's meeting will take place on Thursday, March twenty-first. At seven P M. Uh, this will be uh here at the lower township initial building. Uh, and as far as my liaison report is concerned, uh, having to write out to be zoning hearing board. Uh, I'm also liaison to the building code board of appeals, which did I meet?
Thank you, Commissioner Blanton. Uh, this concludes our agenda items for this evening. Uh, now we're open up for public participation on non-agenda items. Would anyone like to address the board?
Um, hi, I'm Melanie Caruso. I live at five, six, five, and straight in Ward two. Um, my request tonight is just for this board to consider something in the ordinance. On code enforcement, considering animals and creating a nuisance and health hazards. Um, I've spent a lot of time talking to Commissioner Pace over the past. Six months. Um, I'm currently living next to someone who has created a huge health hazard. On my property and we're finally getting some movement with the township. However, I have had. I can't tell you how many conversations with Commissioner Pace, very passionate conversations. Mainly because I have a three-year-old son and he, this is just creating a huge health hazard where we're afraid to use our property. We're afraid to let our son play outside because of cat feces, because of the animals and vermin that they are bringing in. From what I understand, the code is very vague, and I also understand that if you were to change the code specifically to cats, you probably will have people lining up. Out the door and making this meeting about cats and things like that. So. Just coming up with some sort of creative solution because at the same time. We need to use our property and this is really not fair where. You know, these people, they care for these animals, but at the same time, we've caught twenty cats since November. It would township provided traps along with two records. Like there needs to come to a point where, when does this stop? And we've tried to expect a reasonable solution from unreasonable people, and it has been met with. Opposition and basically defiance where. We've talked about potentially selling our house. Who's going to want to buy our house when you can see structures constructed on a patio? Where she's housing these cats. Like, it's to the point where we're really, my husband and I are very frustrated and we just want to be able to basically reclaim our property again. But we need some assistance and some support from the township, and we're starting to get that. But at the same time, I don't want any other family to go through this.
May I ask a question? These are, these are domesticated.
And it was basically created. Like, uh, litters were born and it just. Exploded from there and this. Woman has taken it upon herself to be the caregiver of these animals. And they're still not gone. We caught twenty. And there's still more cats and she continues to feed them.
I I guess Chris or to maybe give a commissioner, so I'm not familiar enough with the ordinances to maybe ask every question. I thought we had ordinances around, you know, non-domesticated patterns. So I guess the the ordinance that we've been using is the animals chapter, and there's a nuisance section that. As Melanie stated, it's kind of broadly about uh like sanitary conditions. So. This isn't an issue that comes up periodically throughout the town. It's probably the third or fourth instance um since I got here in twenty-ten. And we kind of follow the a standardized process of being able to communicate with the neighbor who's being impacted by it. Um, and also try to identify where it is originating from. Um, in this case. Um, the main uh corporate is abundantly obvious in the backyard next door, but there are other homes along entry that we know. Are feeding these cats. So it's kind of. Bigger than just kind of one property to the other. Um, we try to do enforcement in. Ways that are are mindful of the people that are involved, they're mindful of the community. So in this instance, we were able to provide traps that we have at public works for the corrosives to be able to use. And good lord, were they successful with them on a scale that is, that that just shows what they've been dealing with. As a township. There has not been an investment in providing animal control. It's something that. For all of Lowermoreland's history has been uh an obligation of individual property. On top of that though, because small town, we tend to know a lot of the people that are involved. Um, we also sent the chief of police to meet with the neighbors that that are doing this. Um, I don't know that there are too many towns where a feral cat issue yields a house call from the chief of police. But that's what we are able to do here in Littlemoreland. Again, frustratingly, that didn't yield, I think, the scale of result um that that. That we needed here. So that jumped us up into the next thing, which I think we're we're going into uncharted territory. Um, but probably right time to do it with our new code staff here with uh Judge Merton in place. Rather than Judge Redenberg, who I think we had an expectation for how. They would have handled this. So I know that uh Melanie had met with uh our staff uh recently after we had a phone call about all of this. Where I think we're proceeding with the citation um against uh the the neighbors that are are engaging in this activity. The ordinance provides for fines uh. On a per instance basis. The ordinance and nothing through the court system is going to grant us the ability to go onto their property or. Uh, an officer of the court to go onto their property to discontinue this. So understanding that kind of is a shortcoming regardless of. Whatever structure we would have had set in place for this. Um, uh, that's always kind of been one of the barriers to taking it to district court, but given just this kind of new team that's all involved. Might as well see if it kind of doubles down on that next tier of. Of, we provide the notice if they don't modify their behavior based off of the notice, then we file the citation, get them in front of the district judge. And see if that is the next thing that might modify behavior. And. Sort of doing it. We don't know how that's going to play out, but that's what we're trying.
I mean, I guess what I'm asking is because they're cats, it's it's great, but like if I wanted to have, you know, twenty chickens, I could.
So that's a zoning.
So this wouldn't fall under that because they're they're in that space and they're not, they're not pets, right? So.
Right. Yeah, I think we we followed this Penn State uh guide that is referenced out of the zoning ordinance. That you Google that and that brings up uh a horse of what size needs to be kept on what size property in which zoning district. Feral cats are not kind of managed through that. Of the ordinance.
I mean, they're more, they're more of a nuisance ordinance type of situation and. You know, if somebody's committed to bringing in every feral cat in the neighborhood. It's, it's, it's a. As you know.
I know.
It's a problem. I mean, I've seen them. All kept in a condo.
Hmm.
Uh, you know, if someone decided to house. Fifty-some cats in a condo.
Yeah.
And.
And I mean, cat, cats are in heat from February to December. They take a break in January because they've already started. And then I just. Like, this could have been a lot worse if my husband and I had not, with the assistance of Mr. Pace. Taken the initiative to get rid of these cats. If we would have been, probably have about sixty to eighty cats on the street, just continually multiplying.
So the, so this, I mean, there's an ordinance in place and. It would be a citation to District Justice Court, and they're doing the financial penalty and. You'll need to attend a hearing.
Uh, but all I'm asking is perhaps this can be not take seven months. Because that's the part where my husband and I have spent since August trying to deal with this humanely, and then we got into the traps. And it just. Talked to Mr. Hoffman and talked to Mr. Pace. It's just not that it doesn't take this long to enforce something like this. Because this is time, money, just it it it's tiring and it's not fun. It's not, it's not.
Honestly, that's a very fair point. I think there's a. Just the added unique component to this is the things that we've always done in the past have yielded. The result, and this time. We have a different set of parameters for the neighbors that did not yield the result. So I think that's where the the kind of the seven month. Component comes in, especially given that or there's. Animal control is. Is not a township function.
But I have seen this on the building officials report, and I know um. Uh, Ted and Jello are on this.
Right.
So it looks like we're moving.
Yes, we met on Friday, but this is also too just documenting the fact that we feel passionately about this and we appreciate the support from the township. But I don't want another family to have to deal with this for seven months. That's really what the driving force of us coming tonight and encouraged by Mr. Pace to come. Because we've dealt with this for seven months. Like we, I don't let my son in my backyard.
Yeah, I've seen the videos. It's not a good situation to even go through.
Are we still tracking?
Um, so. Not at this moment. We have the traps, however. The incentive for the cats to go into the traps, whatever my neighbor is putting out, they're not interested in the trap. So we can no longer catch the cats that are remaining on the street. So there's, uh, to my knowledge, there's about six cats. But with that, there's probably some that I don't know about, but there's at least six cats that frequent her property currently. But they're not interested because I don't know what she's putting out, but they will not go near the traps.
How we do in district court, if it gets to district court, I guess based off of the notice that's been provided, will be very informative to a few of our bosses.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Melanie.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming.
No, it's not easy.
Anyone else? Anyone else in the room before we move to Zoom? Okay, go ahead, Lynn. You have someone on Zoom?
Like Carrie, you're unmuted.
Oh, hello. Um, good evening, everybody. Um, so. I just wanted to ask because there had been a lot of talk about redistricting, but we haven't heard anything about it recently. So I'm wondering, what's the current status of redistricting?
Well, the current, current status is that a resident. Filed a. Play. Um, in Montgomery County and it's being processed through Montgomery County Court of Common Pleas. Um. You know, which is scheduled a a hearing for this year. So it should be resolved by the end of the year, I would think. Nothing's going to happen on redistricting this year. Uh. You know, but it's up to the court to. To uh, and the plaintiff to uh, since we're the defendant. Uh, to processes and get it to a hearing in front of the judge.
Okay, so right now we're the defendant. Lowermoreland Township is the defendant. So since um, this is in litigation. As a taxpayer, I'm, I'd just like to know, what is the cost of that to the township?
I have no way of knowing today. Uh, there hasn't been a whole lot of activity. Uh, you can probably make some kind of a request. Uh, a public, an open records request and get some documentation on what the costs are. Uh, but off the top of my head, I don't, I don't know. Chris, I don't know whether.
And it's been as any legal matter that requires several hours of of work by the solicitor's office, it would probably be. A few thousand dollars at this point. I would be able to look back from the date that this uh. Uh, the complaint was filed in county court, which was. Uh, January, February, if, of last year, yep, and be able to pull all of the solicitors invoices from that date to now, out of the number of hours times an hourly rate. Um, it would take a couple of hours on my end to get through that work.
Okay, well, maybe even if um. I don't want to take up more time or expense to the township with that, but if you just tell me what the hourly rate is. Uh, maybe I can just do some averages for this type of uh litigation. And I'm, I'm also wondering, um, if we're taking in. And I'm, I'm also wondering, um, if we're taking into account all of the developments that this board has, has um, passed previously. Why are we doing redistricting now instead of waiting for the completion of the developments in the twenty-thirty census count?
Miss Given, uh, you know, this is a matter under litigation, and you, I mean, you can read the complaint. And the answer to the township filed, it's really not appropriate for you to, uh, I mean, you can ask the question. But it's a matter under litigation, it's not for public discussion from the township's perspective. Maybe you can talk to the plaintiff and get some direction from the plaintiff.
So I, I heard you say something wasn't appropriate for me, but, but this is the portion of the meeting that's for public participation. So it is appropriate for me to ask, you may not be able to respond, but it absolutely is appropriate for me to ask questions during public participation.
Right, it is, you can ask whatever question you, you like, it's public comment.
Absolutely.
The matters that are under litigation, township, and I can't comment on it.
Okay, so um, any, any chance you might, maybe you'll comment on this, or maybe, um, maybe you'll ask me to ask the plaintiff, but. Do you think that it might just make more sense to just hold off and wait until the completion of the developments in the twenty-thirty census?
That a public comment, that's, that's a question. Uh, again, uh, it's a matter that's being litigated, and it's really not appropriate for me to. Uh, answer your questions about a matter that's under litigation. I mean, the issues are spelled out in the complaint, and the answer, the judge is going to make a decision. Um, and it's going to be up to the judge to decide whether or not uh, the re-portionment occurs and when it occurs.
Okay, all right, so we're not sure if it's appropriate to pursue this, and we don't know how much it costs, thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment, is, is there anyone else on the, that would like to address the board, if so, please raise your hand. I don't know, is there a, do you have any more? Okay, if not, uh. This, this is emotional, Jern, sorry. So she better move this second, or let us say.
I, I.